Seven o'clock. Hi, and welcome, everyone, to the September 17th, 2025 Pembroke Special Meeting. Please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings LS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Thank you for coming, everybody. I'm actually going to jump ahead and skip board action items to move on to our scheduled appointment, which is our Fire Chief Jason Viveros with presentation of various accreditations and awards. The floor is yours.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board, Town Manager, and Residents. On behalf of the Pembroke Fire Department, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. It's always my honor to stand before you and recognize the dedicated firefighters that serve our community. This evening, I have the privilege of presenting awards in recognition to members of our department whose commitment and service have made a lasting impact. These awards represent not only years of hard work, but also the pride and professionalism that our firefighters bring to the job every single day. We also have the honor of swearing in a new lieutenant tonight, which is a milestone that reflects both his individual achievements and our department's commitment to professional development. So first, I'd like to take a moment to share some news. This week, the Pembroke Fire Department was honored with a citation from Governor Healy recognizing the Pembroke Fire Department for providing 50 years of exceptional ambulance service to the residents of Pembroke. So. This recognition is a testament not only to the men and women who serve you today, but more importantly, it's to the ones that came before us, who built and, you know, made this service work for the past five decades. Our ambulance program is cornerstone of public safety in the town, and we are proud to continue the tradition of excellence and commitment to our residents. So, on behalf of our department, we want to thank the board for your ongoing support, which makes this level of service possible. So, thank you very much. Next, if it's all right, I'm gonna move the podium a little bit.
Of course.
So next, I'd like to present the Massachusetts Fire Service Commission Service Awards. These awards are more about more than just time. They represent countless calls answered, training hours completed, and a steady commitment to keeping our community safe. These members have dedicated their lives to protecting others, and these awards are our way of formally recognizing their dedicated professionalism in the example that they set for all of us. So, the first person being recognized tonight is firefighter Matthew Cunningham is receiving the 20 Year Service Award. Lieutenant Mark Robertson was also to receive the 20-year award, but unfortunately, he had a family commitment tonight and wasn't able to make it. Next, I'd like to call up Deputy Chief Mark Yasseraro, who is receiving the 25-year Service Award. Now we get to the people that have been here a real long time. Like the Call Firefighter Sean Halloran, who's receiving the 35-year Service Award. Sorry, you need to stay up here for a minute. Sean actually retired back in July, so I didn't have a chance to recognize him then, but we want to recognize him tonight for that. And I'd like to call up Captain Galancy, who has something to present for him from the Call Association.
Sean, how you doing?
Good.
On behalf of the Pembroke Call Department, I want to give you the plaque that says, "In grateful appreciation of your 38 years of faithful and devoted service given to the Pembroke Fire Department and Company One and the community we serve."
Next, I'd like to call upon Call Firefighter Walter Butch Scolich, who's receiving the 40-year Service Award. So, interesting thing about Butch was he actually retired from the full-time department a number of years ago, but loved it so much, he stayed on as a qualified fighter. Thank you. And finally, the guy who helps me put all this together and keeps track of all these things for me, receiving the 40-year Service Award, Captain Robert Killinger. So, next, I'd like to call up Deputy Chief James Shea, Deputy Chief Mark Yasseraro, and Captain Jordan Hill to join me. So, these three individuals have achieved a significant milestone in their fire service careers. They have all received the Fire Chief Accreditation from the Massachusetts Fire Service Commission. This accreditation is not given out lightly. The program establishes requirements based on education, training, and experience in all areas relevant to serving as a fire chief. This represents a high standard of professional achievement, leadership, and dedication to continuous improvement. Their achievements tonight represent a major step forward in our department's succession planning. We are fortunate to have them on our team, and I'm proud to serve alongside them. So, congratulations on this well-deserved honor. And finally, I would like to have Lieutenant Seamus Richerelli and his wife Grace come up. I know he loves attention.
Yes, sir.
It's my privilege to introduce Lieutenant Seamus Richerelli, who will be officially sworn in tonight by our town clerk. Seamus is someone who I've had the honor of working with for many years. He was actually my first hire when I became Fire Chief over 11 years ago. Since then, I've watched him grow into a strong leader, and over the past three years, I've had the great pleasure of working with him as he represents the Fire Fighters Union as the union president. His leadership, professionalism, and dedication to the fire service and to his community make him an outstanding choice, and I'm proud to see him advance in this next step in his career. So, with that, our town clerk, can you come up and administer the oath?
Seamus, can you raise your hand?
I, Seamus Richerelli.
I, Seamus Richerelli.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a duly appointed lieutenant.
As a duly appointed lieutenant.
For the Town of Pembroke's Fire Department.
For the Town of Pembroke's Fire Department.
In accordance with the bylaws of the Town.
In accordance with the bylaws of the Town.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
So, that concludes our ceremony for tonight. Once again, I want to thank the Select Board for your continued support of our department and for allowing us the chance to share these important recognitions with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I really appreciate that you guys come out and share this with us. I feel like there was a little bit of a space there where we didn't get to be a participant any longer. So, I think it's important.
We're happy to share with you.
We love having you.
We always fill up your room, so.
We like you to fill up our room. We appreciate it, and congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Give them a few minutes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone.
You know, you're gonna have to read this entire thing.
Yeah.
Just warning you. Um, yeah, I think they're probably gonna maybe just warn. Well, let's see. Just give everybody a minute to get out. You might be all right. Can't close both the doors. No, we can't close them both. Can't we? I don't think we could. Just the one is fine. Alrighty, Board Action Items. We have a vote. Sorry, vote sale of general obligation municipal purpose bonds and borrowing general obligation ban. Bill, you. Oh, you're gonna come on up? No, you can come on up. Hi, Kathleen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me.
Always.
So, I'm gonna be here tonight to ask for a vote from the board for our two debt issuance that we have coming up. First, I'd like to give you an inside scoop on, we did have our credit rating calling that's required for any borrowing that we do, and Standard and Poor's, I'm happy to report, has affirmed our double A stable credit rating. And also this year, they have issued us a SP-1 positive on our ban, short-term rating, and I'm also excited to report to you that that's actually the highest Standard and Poor's issues on short-term debt, and we were excited to receive that. With that being said, we went on the market for bids on September 10th for the two issuance. The first issuance we'll touch on was the ban, the short-term borrowing, and we actually received six bids. The winning bidder was Truist Securities with a total net interest cost of 2.53, and that's inclusive of a premium of 18, um, excuse me, 81,000, and that's to help with issuance and the closing costs for this borrowing. And in that ban, I'm just gonna touch real quick because we're not gonna break it down too far. You're gonna have the community center supplemented funding still, the HVAC rooftop for the school, water storage tank upgrades, Station 2 and 3 treatment plant, replacement well for connection, meter reader change out plan, well for permit increase, well cleaning, and asset management plans. Our second issue was the bond, the permanent borrowing, and we actually received 11 bids on that, with the highest bidder being Huntington Securities at a total net interest cost of 3.74%. And that actually included also a premium of just under $3 million for the cost of issuance and the closing. And inclusive in that would have been the 35 million out of the 61.1 million for the Public Safety Building, 8 million for the Water Department, and we had a Ford F-550 dump truck and an off, a street sweeper included in that. So, in front of you, we have a vote to borrow both of them, and we just need the motion to be read and for a full board to vote.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? If not, Rich, that motion is yours.
I move the sale of the 40,790,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2025 bonds of the Town dated September 25th, 2025. The bonds to Huntington Securities Incorporated at the price of 43,567,478-41, and acute interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on August 1st of the year's in the principal amounts and bear interest in the respective rates as followed as printed. And further, the bonds maturing on August 1st, 2050, a term bond, shall be subject to mandatory redemption while mature as follows, as printed. And further, to approve the sale of 8,380,000 at a 3.50% general obligation bond, anticipated notes of the Town dated September 26, 2025, and payable September 2025, 26, the notes to Truist Securities Incorporated at par in acute interest, if any, plus premium of 81,000, 034.60. And further, in connection with the marketing and the sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 3rd, 2025, and a final official statement dated September 10th, 2025, the bond official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. And further, that in connection with the marketing and the sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated September 3rd, 2025, and a final official statement dated September 3rd, 2025, and a final official statement dated September 10th, 2025, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. And further, that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions that are set forth by the bond official statement. And further, that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events to close undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes, as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and the notes from the time to time. And further, that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance, federal tax compliance procedures, and continuing disclosure procedures in such a form as the town treasurer and the bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are current in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant security laws. And further, that the certificates or documents relating to the bonds and notes collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each with such regard as original and all which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of the executed counterpoint of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by any, by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as electronic mail in a PDF, effective as delivery of a manual, manually executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures of any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents in all matters relating therefore, thereto having the same legal effects as original signatures. And further, lastly, that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or any other documents as may be deemed by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
It's a mouthful.
Good.
It's a turn of talk.
Thank you. It's a mouthful. Next up, we have vote to enter contract negotiations and issue stipend to Town Manager. I would actually like to break this into two, I think these are two separate issues, so there should be two separate motions for discussions, whichever. So I'd like to do vote to enter contract negotiations, or begin with that at least.
Move to enter into contract negotiations.
Second.
With the Town Manager.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to issue the stipend to the Town Manager, presented in executive session on June 11th, 2025.
Hold on, please. I know, hold on, please. Before we carry on, the second part of this, I actually had hoped to table the issue stipend to Town Manager. I had wanted to reach out to Town Council, it could have been miscommunication on my part, I thought it was gonna be on the next meeting, and I prefer, I would prefer to table it to our 9/24 meeting, as I would like to reach out to Town Council before we have any sort of discussion on this. My concern was that it was possible that any discussion might touch on some sort of performance, conversation, so.
I'll make a motion to table that item.
All right, well, I can second it. Did anybody, well, before we actually make a motion, did anybody have any discussion on this or conversation? Nothing? Okay. All right, you made a motion, I made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Were you an aye or a no?
Aye.
Yes.
I'm a yes and aye.
Oh, so you want to table it? Okay, misunderstood.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I had it right, because I thought I misunderstood you. All right, so then it passes, we table it.
So, going back to the contract negotiations, I'd like to recommend a negotiating team.
Oh, right, so we didn't actually get to talk about that because we jumped ahead. Typically, we actually create like a working group, right, with the two board members. Last time, it was John and I to work on any sort of contract negotiations with Bill. I don't know if anybody has any interest in being on that. I know I would like to be on it, but I'd be open to.
I think it should be the, it should be the chair and somebody with a lot of experience with many town administrators. I nominate Dan and Tracy.
Does anybody else have any interest on being a part of the working group?
Dan, you all right?
Dan, do you want to be in the working group?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to vote that? We probably should. Do you want to try that again?
So, it's better to have it democratically, but it is in your purview to just appoint them, but we've traditionally done it this way.
I think we should, okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I made a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you. All right, so that's the contract negotiations. Just backing up, I just, we voted to table the stipend issue to the 9/24 meeting, just so we're all clear and on the same page, if it didn't sound very clear. Do we have a need to enter executive session?
Yes.
That would be me, Rich.
Where are we at?
On the agenda, right here.
Okay.
This one, honey.
Executive session pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, parentheses 2, "To discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations with non-union personnel if an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares," and 3, "To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair says so declares." Pembroke Police Officers Association, AS, AFS, CME, Council 93, Local 1700, Town Hall, Public Works, and Water Enterprise.
Second.
All in favor? John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Do we have a need to enter, re-enter public session? No?